Hello, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Stillwater Planning Commission, September 18th, 2012. I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It looks like our first item under land use items for discussion and possible action is a Central Oklahoma United Methodist Retirement Facility Incorporated Preliminary Plan Unit Development, PZ .12 .1642, requesting review and approval of a preliminary PUD for a retirement community known as The Ranch in Eppworth Living Community and consisting of multiple buildings on property currently addressed and zoned at 6221 West 19th Avenue, that's RSS Residential Single Family Small Lot, and 6523 West 19th Avenue, which is RSS PUD Residential Single Family Small Lot with Plan Unit Development. And with that note, I've received a memo here, I'll just read it out loud. Subject is Preliminary Plan Unit Development, The Ranch, Eppworth Living Community. Public hearing was advertised for a preliminary plan unit development known as The Ranch, Eppworth Living Community located at 6523 West 19th and 6221 West 19th Avenue. The applicant has now requested that the current consideration be withdrawn. But I do understand that maybe there's someone representative from Eppworth that would like to speak and say a little something.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name's Brian Coon, I represent the owner. I just wanted to, I'll be really brief, I know you've got other things to talk about, but I did want you to know, we are looking at an alternate site right now north of the golf course on Washington, and I didn't want it to bid out into the public or a public record that we're just withdrawing and going away. We couldn't get water onto the Ranch side on 19th Range, so we're going on the other side of town. We've met with your staff today and appreciate them spending time with us, that it looks like a lot easier site to do. I just want to let you know, we will be back before you with the new PUD on the new site. So The Ranch project is not going away, we still, we want to be in Stillwater, and I want to be here as quickly as possible, so we will be back before you as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Great, look forward to that, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. City of Stillwater MAP Amendment, PZ .12 .1668 to rezone 1502 South Main from RSS Small Lot Single Family to O Office and 2115 North Husband from P Public to RSS Small Lot Single Family. I might mention too, and I probably should have before the meeting started, the way this works, what we'll do is we'll ask staff to come up, kind of give us the findings on both of these. At that point, I'll open up the public hearing, I'll ask anyone who wishes to speak in favor to come up. Once all of those folks are done speaking, I'll ask for anyone who would like to speak in opposition to come forward. And once, once for and against have been talked about, I'll close the public hearing, ask for staff's findings, and then of course we'll have discussion here, potentially a motion and a second and a decision. So, just wanted to kind of let everybody know how the process works, so you would know if you do feel like you'd like to come up and speak. Mr. Coots?
Okay, Tom Coots, Planning Assistant Development Services. As I said, this is a request to rezone 2115 North Husband Street and 1502 South Main Street. Both these properties are properties that are owned by the City of Stillwater. And just to explain my presentation and the report that you have, since this is one request but two properties, it's kind of divided into the two, so that's how I'm going to do this, I'm going to talk about one property, then go to the next property. First one I was going to talk about is 2115 North Husband. This property is, it's kind of surrounded by residential zoning, some RSS and some RTSL zoning. Request that you have for you right here is for RSS zoning. I did want to mention at this point, we did get a call from a neighbor and was questioning the RSS zoning and suggested maybe the RSL zoning, and I'd be inclined to agree with that, since it's RSS on one side of the street and RSL on the other side of the street. So I might recommend that if you send this forward, that it be with RSL zoning. And this is an air photo of the property, as you can see, it's surrounded by single-family homes. The property in question is in the hatched area, it's not built on, somebody apparently is using it as a garden, but it's, it's in a residential area and either zoning district is a residential zoning district. Then I'll move on to 1502 South Main. This property is approximately 1.5 acres in size, it's surrounded by some RSS zoning, small lot, single family, some CB Central Business or Community Business District and the bid district overlay. And across the street, we've got some CG, general commercial, and south of it is some public zoning. This air photo, you can kind of see it's surrounded on the north and kind of the west sides by basically residential uses. And across the street, we've got some commercial, and then to the south, it's a fire station. You can also see there is a floodplain. The, this hatched area here, the mouse kind of going over, is the 100-year floodplain. This white area would be the 500-year, so this 100-year is the more restrictive than the 500-year. So I'll just, staff finds that the proposed RSS and O zonings are consistent with the future land uses of low-density residential and thoroughfare commercial. It's low-density residential for the one on 2115 North Husband and a thoroughfare commercial on 1502 South Main, as designated in the comprehensive plan. And the subject properties have been declared surplus real estate by resolution of the city council. You have any other questions for me?
I have one, Tom. How, I guess how would this sale go about? Would it be a public auction, or maybe that's a John question, or if it's a sealed bids, or how are these properties disposed of?
It's a public auction that is scheduled for the 29th of October. I don't know the exact time, but it'll be advertised well in advance.
Okay, so it's done at a public auction?
Yes.
That was one of my questions.
Tom, did you say that that is in the bid district overlay?
No, this property is not, the property is north of it that are zoned CB are. If we'll bring that back up, we can just look at that right quick. There we go. The hatched area is the property 1502 South Main, and then the pink color, kind of north of it, it'd be the CB district, and it's all in the bid.
I don't know that this is pertinent to our jobs, but is there currently, I went by there today and drove back around behind there, and there's a vehicle parked there, is there currently a person residing there?
I've asked that question, I've been told that it's not being rented out, it's being, it's used basically by the Fire Department and Police Department for drills and whatnot.
Anything else for Tom? Thank you, don't you? Okay, this time I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Tell you what, I think I want to separate these, let's do it that way, and we'll go ahead and say anyone that would like to speak in favor of the 2115 North Husband property, if you would please come up.
I'm not sure if I'm in favor or not.
Come on, come on up, if you would please state your name and address.
I'm John Asmitz, I'm on the adjacent property. Okay, and I'm not sure what's before us now, since Steph has responded to my call this morning, and I asked, because several of us were talking, and we said, why is it RSS as opposed to RSL, which is the entire east side of Husband? And I'm in favor of, you know, just having the whole street look same way, same zoning. Now, across the street is RSS, but it seemed like on that side, that would be there, and at least some of the neighbors that I've talked with, the concern is if we do go with an RSS and townhouses are built and we suspend some of the setbacks, it will not be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Whereas the RSL, that's going to be single-family, that's what every other lot along that side of the street is. So I don't know if I'm in favor or against, I'm in favor of RSL, if I can say that.
Fair enough. Sounds great.
Okay, any questions for me? Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor, 2115 North Husband? Okay, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition, again, on 2115 North Husband? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on then to 1502 South Main. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of 1502 South Main? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Again, your name and the address for the record, please.
Certainly. My name is Tim O'Neill, and I live with my wife Laura at 1405 South Husband. Do I need to speak over here? Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm joined by my neighbors Calvin over here and Jeff in the back that live on either side of our property, and as you can see from the map, we're not far from 1502 South Main. We purchased our home a year ago and have since heavily renovated it, replacing all of the utilities, the roof and so forth, and we made the significant investment, the entirety of our life savings, with the goal of raising our family in a quiet corner of the city where the only traffic comes from our friends and neighbors. Because we made the decision to purchase our home, we can, before we did, we consulted the city's comprehensive community development plan to ensure that the location would remain the charming assemblage of historic homes we fell in love with, which is why we were so disappointed to receive notification that the planning commission wants to rezone the land just south of our home from small lot, single family to office, citing the very reports we used to confirm the long-term viability of the neighborhood as justification for a rezoning effort that threatens the integrity and the serenity of the neighborhood by opening Husband Place and Husband Street to a potentially dramatic increase in traffic and eliminating a green space currently used as a place for community interaction. While the report concerning PZ 12 1668 claims office zoning to be an appropriate buffer between residential uses and more intense uses, we respectfully disagree, because the property is the only tract of land between our neighborhood and the site of the fire station, an extremely welcome neighbor in a state known for grass fires, rezoning residential land to office only introduces more intense land uses. Furthermore, the applicable city plans and policies cited by the planning commission's report supposedly guiding this decision appear inconsistent with the report's conclusions. According to the Urban Core Neighborhoods Planning Subarea, that is page 3-19, the goal of the comprehensive plan is to quote, "maintain the vitality of older neighborhoods as desirable living areas that offer a competitive alternative to new suburban locations," end quote, and with two primary objectives. The first being to quote, "conserve older neighborhoods in making them attractive, adequately served with amenities, and protected through zoning and compatibility standards," end quote. And secondly, begin quote, "to create a sense of place that promotes social interaction," end quote. The attempt to rezone this property is wholly incongruous with these objectives. While I can talk a great deal about how office zoning would increase traffic, pose significant drainage problems for land designated as a flood hazard area, and destroy attractive tree-lined green space where my wife and I like to walk our dog, I think a young boy overheard the other day said it best when he raced through the space with arms raised in unabashed glee yelling, "I love the forest." Now, this property may not seem like an idyllic wooded playground, but to this young man and to the rest of the neighborhood, this area is significant, and at the very least, the people invested in the area deserve more time to have their voices heard. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. O'Neill?
Tell me your address again.
1405 South Husband, you'll find it right between Husband Place and Husband Street. It's one, two, three, four lots up, or three lots.
I just not understanding what's going on. This is the, okay.
Five is right there. Okay, it is right there.
I wish I, I wish I had driven back in there. I drove about behind the fire hill and saw the nice place to play and whatnot. I don't know the specifics of this situation, and I know that you have been concerned that this was coming very quickly at you, and I'm not sure, SD, I wouldn't be in favor of some, a little bit of additional research myself, just to be able to drive back in this area, back in here, and just to look the place over a little bit further, maybe consult with some city people as to what the, some other things, but I did a little bit of due diligence planning on this deal, but I didn't do enough that I think I'm comfortable personally moving forward. I don't know what the situation is or the timeframes of anything, but I don't understand why it might not be a reasonable, I got on this commission to make this a better place to live for the citizens of Stillwater, and I may well vote in a way you wouldn't prefer, but I want to make sure that we've thought it through, and I hope that I'm not stepping any, on any toes or in any situation where we would need to hurry further. But I wouldn't mind a little bit of regroup time on this one as well, it's the first time, one since I've been on the commission, five, six months that I've asked for that.
That's duly noted, Commissioner Merrifield. Tell you what, we'll go ahead and get through the public hearing, and then we'll discuss it during that.
Not bad.
No, you're perfectly fine, that's a very valid point. Any other questions for Mr. O'Neill? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the rezoning of 1502 South Main? Anyone else in opposition? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's findings.
Alternatives.
Or, I'm sorry, alternatives, I always mess that one up, Tom, thanks for the question.
We can accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the proposed MAP amendments as presented. We can find that additional information and/or discussion is needed prior to making a recommendation, so either continue the consideration to a certain date or table consideration until the additional information is available. We can find that a different zoning district than requested is more appropriate for the subject properties, and ask that the recommendation be sent to the city council after any necessary re-noticing has been accomplished. We can find that the MAP amendments are not an appropriate use for the properties based upon the impacts to the surrounding vicinity, and recommend that the city council deny the MAP amendments.
I do have one question, Tom. Why was O picked? I mean, a commercial zoning versus a residential zoning?
Certainly had a few choices. One could argue that CB would have been, you could go both ways, really. O seemed like a middle ground with CB zoning and commercial zoning across the street, Main Street being a major thoroughfare, intense commercial uses generally appropriate. Or it's been pretty underutilized for a number of years, more residential uses makes sense too. Office is kind of right in the middle, and office is used in many places between more intense uses and residential uses, and so I think that's why office was settled on.
I know office is what the, the most restrictive commercial zoning, is that correct?
Yes.
I guess the other question I would have, would it be advantageous to basically zone, you know, I'm just kind of looking at it, and I understand an O along, along Main Street, I mean, I think that's correct. Is there a chance of splitting that, doing, doing O as far back as let's say the bid district as we're showing there?
Is that alley, I'm guessing?
Residential, but I don't, I'm just asking the question.
You can send it forward that way if you'd like.
And again, I'm not opposed to Mr. Merrifield's suggestion.
Next time I blurt out like that, I'll go down to the public hearing.
You're fine, Joe. But no, and I'm sure not opposed to, you know, taking another few weeks and giving everyone a chance to get a little better feel for, for the situation either. I just, I just wanted to ask those two questions, to see if that would be a possibility and maybe why. You know, I guess the other part of it, obviously if this is going out to bid, which the money will come back to the city, I mean, I understand that you want to zone it in such a way that it also brings back, you know, that its most value to our city in that respect, not to diminish the neighbors' concerns, but again, we do have a duty to the city, to the folks of the city to...
Are there bid dates set?
It sounded like it was September 29th, or October 29th.
October 29th, so, but you have a council meeting, your next meeting is October the 2nd, which follows the October 1st council meeting, so the council wouldn't be able to take it up until the 15th, which they could do.
I just might just kind of say on, on both of these...
John, introduce yourself, John, just in case people don't know.
John McClany with the City of Stillwater, sorry.
You're okay.
With the one on 2115 North Husband, we've been advised by our auctioneer on both of them that if we go ahead and get the zoning taken care of, that will increase the amount of money that the city gets for them. With the one on Husband, nobody can do anything with it as long as it's got P zoning anyway, so we tried to fit it into what the neighborhood was. With the one on South Main, we're, we're doing the transitional kind of thing, you know, trying to get the commercial zoning but not going too far at the same time and making it just wide-open commercial. If it doesn't get rezoned, it isn't going to make any difference on whether or not we sell it, it's only going to make a difference possibly on how much the property brings. So the sale's going forward on the 29th, no matter what.
So you can, you can transfer it as a public zoned P currently, or would you have to rezone it?
Well, the one on Main is not zoned P, it's zoned residential right now. If we leave it residential, we'll sell it as residential.
Right, but we have to do the, the Husband one to...
We don't have to, but whoever buys it is going to have to, so we're trying to take care of that for them.
Okay.
Anyway, I thought maybe a little clarification might have...
Sure, thank you, John.
You could actually move on one and not the other if you chose to do that.
That was going to be my next question, if we, if we wanted to.
Well, council, I mean, our decision is really a recommendation to council.
That is correct.
And so if there's some other situations, which they have to take in a lot of other considerations, then this commission is the place to do. So I don't think we could, I want to make certain we don't put them in an awkward position or an uncomfortable position on anything they're needing to do, and so it really would clear from our hands conceptually that way, but it's not a pass-the-buck move, but I'm just saying whatever we would choose to do, they have the right, the option to...
Sure, we, we're only a recommending body to the council on these items, so...
Chair, I'd like to split into two and make a motion on one of them and then have further discussion on the next one.
Fair enough.
If I can do that, I'd like to make a, a motion on the property 2115 North Husband from P to RSL zoning.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to go from, on the 2115 North Husband, to go from P to RSL, which is residential large lot zoning. Please place your votes.
Give me just a second since we're splitting the vote. Let's reprogram. Okay, we should be able to vote. And this is the MAP amendment for 2115.
Okay, that, yeah, this is for 2115 North Husband, that is four votes yes, with Commissioner Teague absent. Okay, so we'll move down now to our other item at 1502 South Main.
I am uncomfortable today. I have no problem tabling this. I also have no problem taking action as long as we're just rezoning the area right next to Main. I've gone out there, I don't believe rezoning that area next to the single-family homes is appropriate. I believe that showing our intent to rezone next to Main, I don't have a problem with them today. I don't have a problem tabling this for more review and discussion.
Commissioner Merrifield, you, you brought up the issue of maybe wanting a little more time to look the site over, and I'll...
Well, I haven't really thought it through, and I'm still kind of pondering how that would impact the sale situation. Do we have the authority to proportionally zone that?
That can be our recommendation, I'm assuming.
Certainly.
Yeah.
I, I think that's where I would sit, and it might be a good thing, I think that would be a balance of putting the position, the city in a better position to come out on a situation, and I think it would still, from what I understand, protect the neighborhood a bit. But would we specify specifically the zoning situations in our recommendation?
I think we should.
Yes.
And, well, don't we have to know feet inches on this game? I mean, is this our, do we have the authority or even should we be messing, is this our...
This is your right, that you're making a recommendation, if you want to, if you don't think the entirety of the lot needs to be rezoned, then you can certainly make that recommendation.
And my suggestion, I believe it's Husband Place, that's the next street west of Main, is that correct? My suggestion would be from, from Main back to the center line of Husband Place, from that point east being O, and then that point west being RSS, or whatever that adjacent existing residential is. Yes, Mr. Paul?
Paula Dennis in Development Services, if I may have the map on the screen pulled back up, and I'd just like to offer what I had heard earlier. The Central Business District is this that's outlined in gray, and one of the discussion points was the rezoning of Office back to the depth that there is adjacent business zoning, which would just be to the alley.
Okay, I thought that was Husband Place, that's just an alley there.
Just an alley.
I would actually recommend that it be in line with the adjacent Business District, if you wouldn't mind taking that under consideration.
Yeah, I'm liking that.
And I don't want to act like I'm pushing this along or hurrying this along, but I feel if we, if we do it like this, and we rezone the front, leave the back RSS, I think it's extremely advantageous in the sale side of it, because you can market two properties at the same time, you guys have an extra week to, or, we can, I guess two weeks for the board, council won't see it until the first, is that correct?
That's correct.
So they'll see it at the first, so you'll have an extra week for any discussion that you would need, and then I feel it would just be, I mean, we're, we, the front can't be RSS, I mean, on Main Street, it just doesn't make sense, but the backside of it does make sense, and the traffic patterns there, I would just, I mean, I don't want to act like I'm just hurrying along, but...
I agree, if you want to make a motion so...
Hang on just a second, I'd like to ask Mr. O'Neill to come back up.
Yes.
Your, your discussion is actually... Sorry, your discussion about extending the, the commercial zoning in line with where it is, is, is what I sense from my discussions with my neighbors, they're comfortable with. I can say personally for myself, I won't speak for them, but I can say personally for myself, that this would make me happy to split the zoning in which we, we keep that line across the...
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I can definitely support that, Mike, sure can. So, is that a motion?
That's a motion that it be zone Office to the current location that the, from east to west, that the Central Business District is located, and it be RSS from that port on west.
Very well said. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. When we're ready, we'll place our votes. Okay, please place your votes. And that does pass with four yeses, and again, Commissioner Teague absent. Thank you for your time. Move on to the next item, approval of the meeting summary for discussion and possible action. I guess we have our minutes of the September 4th, 2012 meetings. Commissioners, any changes, deletions, subtractions, additions?
I was absent.
Move for approval.
I'll second that. Motion and second. Motion a second. Please place your votes. The minutes are approved with two abstentions by Commissioner Teague and Commissioner Merrifield. Next item, our next Planning Commission meeting will be on October second, two thousand and twelve, right here at the same time. With that, we'll move to our last item, adjournment.
I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion a second to adjourn. Please place your votes. And we are adjourned. Thank you.